Call me to order, please stand and make the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After the pledge there, just to mention something, Cheryl texts me a little over. Get the opportunity to marvels up in the can as I come right to Veterans Park. Boy, it's beautiful. Looks great. I'll go through there on the way up. Oh, presentation and awards. We have a certificate of commendation to the wastewater treatment facility operational award. Once again, stirred for wastewater treatment plant and staff. Recognition of exceptional compliance with Minnesota Police and Control Agencies. Your dedication to protecting Minnesota's waters is duly recognized and appreciated by the state of Minnesota. Sean, I'd like you to come and get this and take it out to all the fellows at the plant. It's been kind of a weird transition out there. We're working through a lot of different people and we're getting some new people on the job. And Sean's their, Sean is their leader. What a wonderful leader he is. I would comb your hair for the picture too.
Good thing there's no wind.
That ain't gonna get any better. We've had a lot of different help, Mark, if you wanna go out there and sometime to the plant. Talk to all the guys, get their pictures, maybe judge them, help bring in stuff. But thanks a lot and some of the credit has to go to us here for helping out some of the stuff. So thank you. All right, call order roll call starting on my left.
Counselperson Jim Malojevich.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Brent Flyer.
Counselperson Josh Scharrick.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions from staff? Anything at the table? Motion to approve, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry. Approval of the council meeting minutes of May 3rd. The 2nd, that was the workshop, wasn't it?
Yes, I'll move to approve that.
Okay, change that one to the workshop of May 3rd, we have motion to approve.
Second.
Who did the agenda, who wrote the agenda?
I didn't fill out these.
We got both of these so far. Going for a record tonight. Josh, second in this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll carry. Now, we're looking towards a motion for the regular meeting minutes of April 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us on to finance and budget and we have the council payable with the additional listing. If you have any questions on any of those, direct them to Finance Director Carla. Do you approve? We have a motion to approve finance or, excuse me, finance or council payable tonight, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion, any of it? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us reading the motions and general business tonight. First item under motions general business will be a public hearing. Hearing on sign removal at Ambassador Liquor. It's okay, the city has received a complaint regarding the freestanding Ambassador Liquor sign and the Liquor Wall sign owned by Gary Johnson through 6th Main Street. During left, this St. Johnson letter on March 3rd. Not only the city ordinance requires your business remove all signs from its property within 60 days after the business closed. Ambassador Liquor has not been existed since Honest Liquor opened in the former site in 2018. Left requested that the signs be removed within 30 days on April 27th. Follow-up letter notified Johnson, a public hearing will be held tonight to determine whether the signs constitute violation of city ordinance and to direct the abatement. Pursuant to ordinance 1310.07, the letter also indicated that Johnson would be given an opportunity to review this hearing. So I'm going to close the regular meeting over to the public hearing. Public hearing is now open to discuss the signs at Ambassador Liquor. Now, any written or oral comments coming in, Cheryl?
On your desk, there is another email that he sent to Mr. Johnson sent to Melanie regarding the.
The Sunday April 7th meeting.
Yes, yeah.
And I think you all received emails before that. Is there anybody who would like to step up and have anything to say about? In the public, same here at the table, have anything they'd like to say about the abatement? For, against, or otherwise?
Well, I'm just, I'll just say that I'm a little confused by this because the business has been closed for a super long time. I haven't seen anybody in there since Honest moved out. I can understand if the owner of Honest is concerned about people being directed in the wrong direction and causing confusion. But I don't think it's necessarily extremely harmful because of the fact that he is right there. But I, I get it. Especially when the sign says Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., I mean, it's clearly not the case. Do you understand apparently though that Mr. Johnson wants to use it as his home office for his LLC? And I think that his emails show that apparently Shop Distributing will be removing all of the liquor advertisements from the windows, if I'm not mistaken on that, at least that's what he's saying, right? So that's a start in the right direction. I don't understand why he needs liquor on top of the building. And the ordinance is saying 60 days, right? So in my opinion, that should be removed. If he wants to change his, if he calls his company Ambass, Ambassador Liquor LLC, I don't know that I have any power over that, nor how he would advertise for that. If he wanted it, if he claims that's his home office, that's where I would have a question.
That's what I wondered too, I mean, is that actually, is that defensible? I mean, looking up in the Secretary of State, Ambassador Liquor Inc. is registered office through 6th Main Street. But Ambassador Liquor stopped doing business at that location in 2018, right? So... It should have been taken down then.
Yeah, actually, I would argue that he's probably had a gift of having it, nobody going after this prior.
Been up for five years since it closed.
Well, yeah, and it's been up for, you know, a long time. I don't know what his push is and I just think we need to treat him just the same as we treat everybody else, as we always do. And we would say, remove, remove the sign. Again, I don't know that we have, Melanie, we have some question for you. If he decided to change his, put it, say, Ambassador Liquor LLC or something, there's really, he would be able to do that if that's his home office address, right? I mean, I, I don't wanna get into nitpicking everything here, but I, just in what he wrote in his emails, it already clear, it's pretty clear to me that he intends to do something similar, so I just.
I, I would argue that the business is closed. One of his emails, he indicates that he's only intending to sell the property and dissolve the business. So I'm not sure what actual business he's operating. Just because you call it a tomato, doesn't.
Well, I agree, and I, and I think that when we, when Honest moved, we went ahead and said, yeah, we'll grant him the opportunity to have another liquor license, even though it's right next to her. And nothing happened, I feel like that was wide open opportunity. He had it, I mean, and if that was gonna be his push, you know, to be able to have one there for somebody coming in, it clearly just hasn't happened and it's well past the 60 days, so legally, you say that it's good to go. I, I kind of back that, so.
My recommendation is that the city go ahead and order that violation and order whether it be abated. Maybe give him X amount of days to take the signs down himself, if he needs to.
Yeah, I do think that depending on our ruling tonight, that we, our vote tonight, I do agree that he should have some time before we go ahead and, you know, charge him, like, because we did it. I don't know what that amount, you know, I'll leave that up to you guys and throw in some ideas.
Cheryl Hollings, that liquor license that he, that we approved, good for.
What's that?
That liquor license we approved for him. What's that good for?
He came in shortly after Honest Liquor did.
Yeah.
Or right before, so six, eight months.
They worked for a year.
They worked for a year.
But it isn't approved, it's approved with you guys, but it isn't.
Yeah, there's no liquor license in place, we just.
We approved it, we approved it through us, he has to go through with the state.
He, he has to finalize application and he hasn't done that, so.
Josh?
I think he's, he's had plenty of time to take it down. The ordinance says 60 days, we've given him, what's 360 times 5? I think he's had enough time to do that and I, and I'm fine giving him some more time, putting on rifles tonight to set everything up to get it taken down on his own.
And just as a side note, just because he feels that we treat him unfairly, once this situation came up, I did call, I talked to High Octane and Danny, who owns the building, and they have submitted that letter that it's in the works, it's been in the works, and that'll get put up July. And then I sent one more letter and a follow-up phone call to PC applications to have that sign removed out at any time fitness, now that they're operating, he's not in there.
Perfect, okay. Hey, you want to have anything else to add during this public hearing before we close it, go back to the regular meeting? Never mind, you got. Nothing else, then I'll close the public hearing. Go back to our regular meeting. Council action will be requested and I has determined that the sign, if they are in violation of city ordinance, to order the removal of the signs. And if you'd like it done by May 30th, or if you have a different number in mind, the city will remove the signs and the cost to be assessed to the property.
Give 30 days for the, 30 days for the night.
Go ahead and throw some out there, I'm, I'm open to anything.
I mean, I'm open, just give him even 30 days for the night.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion, we give him 30 days, he can remove the signs from tonight.
But your motion also is that we're finding it in violation clearly and then, and then we, we're gonna order the abatement.
Your motion's been made, it's in violation, and we're going to ask for abatement, we'll give him 30 days from tonight, or the signs will be removed with the cost to be assessed to the property. Is that your motion?
That's it.
Do we have a second?
Second then.
Do we have a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Next item tonight is Geotech Tiff and Business Subsidy. Public hearing was held on April 25th, 2023 for Geotech Tiff and Business Subsidy. Mike Mubani was in attendance and provided information on both of the projects. We're going to have written our oral comments in the public regarding these two proposals. The annexation to the city needed to be completed to approve the resolutions relating to Geotech. The annexation is now completed and staff has recommended moving forward with this approval. So action requested would be to approve Resolution 2023- or Resolution approving the establishment of tax increment financing district number 1-13 with municipal development district number 1 and adoption of the tax increment financing plan relating thereto. You want two resolutions on this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's the first one, so let's take action on that.
I'll move to approve, approve the Tiff district.
Do we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry this. The next action would be to approve Resolution 2023- or Resolution approving Business Subsidy to Geotech LLC. Motion on that? We'll move and explain that, right, okay, you got a motion from Josh, we got a second?
Second.
Second, questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Mike did such a good job. All right, now, some of my favorite stuff coming up. I like the first engineers request for change orders. Attached, please find new change orders. Thanks for coming, Melanie.
Thank you, mate.
Yep. Number one is for CIP North. It was requested by Shimmel, Bill Shimmel, to A1 to install no truck signs for 4th Avenue Southeast to prevent truck use in this roadway. These signs are not included in the original plans and are in addition to the contract. The cost of $965 is to provide, maintain, ensure, and remove the three signs requested. The contractor has already placed the signs. I'd like to clarify that a little bit. Bill requested, but I requested from Bill, because I did follow a semi down that road one day. And we pretty well made it clear that we were not ever gonna allow trucks on the road. Second change order will be to wastewater treatment plant. During inspection of the oxidation dishes after drawdown and cleaning, some needed joint repairs were observed that were not included in the plans. These repairs are necessary to maintain the integrity of the tank. But it can be expected that another change order of similar magnitude for the north tank will also be necessary once that tank has been drawn down. Due to this expectation, it was requested of the contractor to provide a LF price for these three types of fixes that can be applied to the tank. Jenna, the LF price, what's?
The linear foot price.
Okay, linear foot price for these three types of fixes that can be applied to the tank.
The total of that change order is $8,826.95.
Okay, yes, that's. And guys, I don't know if you haven't been out there to look at the work they're doing and stuff and what they're talking about, those tanks are 12 feet deep full of liquid. So until they're completely drowned down like they did for this repair and clean, you don't know the same, this seems need to be recaulked and stuff.
Can't you just scuba down there and take a look at it? A little cloudy.
It is pretty cloudy, Bill and I don't know, we're checking it out. So we can expect this maybe on the other side when they drain that down. All right. All right, any other questions or discussion on either one of the change orders?
So just, so I'm, these are the big.
Yep.
Thanks, but then were the, the.
Too big, almost shaved.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
They're pretty old too, aren't they, or not?
Yeah, actually, they were impressed with how good a shape they were in.
They're 38 years old.
Compared for the age, you said that these are in great shape to the age, just it's normal typical repairs, but you don't see them until it's empty. Just for clarification on this, so they went, the first ones drained, they looked at it, they saw what needed to be fixed. And we're, we just are basically preapproving because we're assuming it's gonna be the same thing for the next one.
No, this 8,000 is for the one that's visible now. For this one now, and when we get to the next one, we'll have, because you don't know what the.
Right, right.
Hopefully it's relatively the same, as you would assume, but. Could have been here, maybe less, maybe a little more than.
Any attachments they gave us, it has to be linear foot price to do it again, so.
Okay, we'll look at that, okay.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the change orders.
I'll make a motion to approve both of them.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. Next is approval of pool, public works, and library applicants for summer employment. Part-time employment, all my names are being submitted for approval by Jake Flynn, Pool Director, Sean Hale, Public Works Director, and Nate Pre-Library Director. It's a page, four names. They've all been grilled by their respective directors and they're approved by the directors and. If you have any questions, we can ask, Sean's here, so we can ask him.
That's a lot, so that, it looks like a lot of the same names, but is that their normal hall of employees? There's like 66 names on here.
For summer, yeah.
Because they all work, they're just like 15 hours, 20 hours a week maybe and.
A lot of them do like swimming lessons too, so they're.
Well, yeah, and I mean, and I would never be one to wanna skip on the number of people watching kids swimming.
But it's the worst, we have two guys that are in one position. One can work mornings, the other one can work after, so it worked out. He's done a hell of a work.
Oh, yeah, I was talking about.
The next one, no, I get that, but just if you look at ours, it looks like there's an extra person in there, they're splitting up.
Has Dean worked for you guys before? He's gonna be more on, or what?
Matt and he's had water in Florida or whatever.
Oh, cool. Dino.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
We can just make a motion for all of them?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve them.
We have a motion to approve all the applicants, do we have a second?
A second, man.
Questions or any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that will carry. That takes us out of general business and takes us to mayor's staff and soul reports. City would like to send their sympathies to the families of Wayne Torgerson, Cerise Mearden, Willis Marie Herrick, and Pastor Bob Burgland. Stewie Crew's car shows are starting up every Friday from 5:30 to 8:00. Park and Auto Brothers and the American Legion, going out, there's always a good show, you guys do a great job. Authorist David Houseright will be speaking at the library on May 11th, and PJ Tracy will speak on May 20th. Thanks once again to Nate and his whole crew for hosting this. Don't forget, probably starting tomorrow, it's garage sale weekend in this town.
Nice traffic.
So it's gonna be.
Starting when?
Garage sales.
Like, when does it go? This weekend?
Starts Thursday, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Supposed to, I think you might see a pretty sales tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, whatever. Take it easy, drive around, enjoy it, have a lot of fun, there's always some good partners to be had.
City, city hall will be closed for those two days.
All right.
Yeah, I wouldn't blame.
If anyone should have come.
Yeah, you should have been there, you should have checked it. Yeah, public works. All right, I also have one other thing I'd like to thank you, says hello Bill, City of Sturville. On behalf of the roster area chamber commerce, thank you for your 19 years of roster chamber membership. Your support to vulnerable is much appreciated. That's... Well, I also want to say, I love Amy, but did a fantastic job up there. And she looks much better TV than you, but I'll say that. She had a great pitch, too bad that guy couldn't catch it. All right, that's all I got, city minister's report.
I have a report in your packet, and I'm sure Brett will report on it here in a minute, but I like signage for the parks is up, so it's really neat to see down in Florence Park and now, as the mayor pointed out, down at Veterans Park, so. Try and keep that date for the dedication open on your calendars, and it's on the 11th, Sunday, 2:00. And actually, that should do it.
For the BFW?
For the BFW, I don't remember.
That's June though, isn't it?
June.
But don't forget, you got more when they come up too.
Yep.
You guys don't forget that.
That'll be at the new park.
Wilhams.
Wilhams, okay. Any questions for the administrator? Any complaints for the administrator? Any congratulations for the administrator? He just completed a week of schooling, he did a very fantastic job up there. He was top of his class.
No wonder who the source of that rumors.
Thought Bill told.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, that takes us to Finance Director's report, Carla.
Kind of business as usual, so I really don't have anything good to say, so I'm gonna tell you no report.
Any questions for our Finance Director? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to Public Works Director, Sean.
The report is in there, I'll give you an update, I talked about the wastewater plant today, they poured concrete on the forms for setting the structures, the beams and stuff like that. They figured by the end of next week, they will start placing fiberglass. So it's ahead of schedule, it's moving on good. He figured within three weeks, they might be moving on to the next ditch, which is way ahead of schedule. So, good news there, it'd be nice to get both pitches back up and get the plant running.
So I drove out to try to get a view of some goats tonight before. Did you see any? I didn't see any. But I was super bummed out, but I don't even know how they can, you said there's 16 of them out there? How do they even move that so thick, all that, like?
Well, that's what they're willing to raise. Wait till you see what it's done.
So did they start out, I noticed, I drove down 11th Avenue and I saw that it's all fenced off along 11th. Is that where they started, or did they? And then, so now they're in a whole different, so there's a second fenced-in area, but those, that fence stayed up. And now they're just.
He made some fence up because he's gonna bring them back, then he doesn't have to set it up again, because he works a few, they're at least placed the sun each section. Now there's getting more greedish out there, so they'll take a little longer per section, because.
So do they all go handi- or do they just go, do they handi- or do they just kinda go wherever?
Yeah, they'll hang it in a group, you go out there in the bucket, shake it with corn, and they'll come.
Hey, honestly, I don't know, I don't know, unless they just eat everything and make their way through it. That's real thick.
At least probably killing there. They'll start killing some.
I might get a cooler beer and go out and watch them go to town.
Sean, you mentioned all the side damage that people are watching.
We, it should, if there's stuff that hasn't been done, let me know, it should all be done. I know I had a call yesterday that one got missed and I went and did it last night before the park were meeting, just because I told them it'd be done and it wasn't, so I.
We have like a little spot on Radcliffe Court that I don't know if it's from a, it's just, it's on a my yard, it's neighbors' buyer mailboxes, it's not a shell, so I assume that's what it is. But they took care of bird all along, like, uh, Chiax sauce.
The guys, some of the first-year guys here, put the sod in there first and thought that that was, you know, and I second, had them around a second time, so that's not gonna cut it, guys, we gotta pull it out here and the sod and put back everything. So some people have called me, this is what they're doing, and it was because we had new guys and they didn't understand the scope of it and.
The seed's coming up already, they're just out there a week ago, you can already see it all pop up.
What's my brother for right now, tooling down?
All right, anything else for Sean? Tell the guys they're doing a good job, Sean, thank you.
Thanks.
City Engineer Report, Jenna, do you have anything else for us? Bet you do.
Well, Melanie. Well, the South project has started, so they are going to actually start with Phase B.
So they start, they start to have scheduling too, or weren't they scheduled to?
Yes, they have started ahead of us.
All right, do we give everybody a heads up on that, or?
You know, for some time. What, what was the deal with that letter that came late that you sent us to 4th Avenue regarding power or something?
Yeah, as you do know, with our street projects, all utilities get a chance to do their work. Well, Min Energy decided to do some extra work since they were in the neighborhood of Fifth. So they're redoing the main lines and some services along 4th. And those services currently are treated or served by a main in the backyards. And so what happened is, they were supposed to send a letter out to all those kind of new folks that weren't on the project, where we notified them of everything that was gonna happen, to tell them that this will be coming. So they'd have a heads up for flags and markings and everything. Well, that was supposed to go out two, three weeks ago, and they missed it. So we started getting calls, and then they realized the letter hadn't gone out yet. So now they did get it typed up and it is in the mail, or maybe they're starting to get it now. But it's to replace, and it's no specific extra direct cost to any of those homeowners. It's part of what Min Energy picks up when they do our projects, so they're picking that section up. And then they will come back to restore whatever areas they had to dig in or cut up to get at it. The other reason they gave was, um, between fences, people's sheds, things like that that are all back there, by moving this out to the streets, it makes a lot easier for future repairs, so.
All right, come back to Jenna.
All right, so for the North project, we're down to about 4th Street intersection. So that intersection is now closed most days due to work being done in the intersection. But that notice was also given out to all the residents there to expect that. And we will meet with the contractor tomorrow for our weekly meeting.
The school is also part of that, so Bussing knows when they get the email sent out, the school gets it also, so they know that that intersection's closed.
Anything else I'm gonna say?
Don't matter. I was gonna, okay, no, they're a little bit. I was getting a look, and they're a little bit behind maybe, but they're making progress with the weather we had.
Yep. So, seems to be going all right.
They are having the, the end of this week, they are having the street crew come in right behind where the road building, so they're going to come in and start getting the road built up while they've already done, so it should shorten the time down, and they're going to continue on right behind them all the way through the process.
We will have to wait for some power poles to move next to the church before we see everything progress there, but yeah, they are coming in to start going with the roadway.
But the homeowners will get a rock base that when we get rain, won't limit them from getting in their driveway.
So, concrete ready, or you think?
No, that won't be done, but at least the big thing is homeowners getting their driveway set there.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Jenna? Thanks, Jenna, you got a lot going on.
Oh, sorry, one more thing.
Oh, see, I know you have a lot.
Yep, although this should maybe come up with committee's scheduling.
Oh, that's right, we got a schedule.
So I'll wait till then.
All right.
Yeah, I did see that May is your month on the S H calendar.
It is my month, thank you.
That's picture.
That's a great photo.
All right, no library graduate night, but we do have fire chief. Chief, what do you got for us?
April, we ran forty-three total calls, six fire calls, thirty-seven EMS, so kind of tracking where we have one. Engine three, as of now, is complete, so there are four of us scheduled to go out on the nineteenth of this month to do our final inspection. As long as we don't find anything major on final inspection, it'll go back to McQueen Emergency and the city, so get radio installed, and then be delivered to us. Our hose in service is going to be mid-June, by the time we get all of our equipment outfitted and do some training with it before we put it into service, so we're hoping mid to late June.
Who drives it down from the cities?
It's delivered by McQueen Emergency, so.
Last time, chief usually drives stuff back and moves them up all the time.
Yep, and they don't let us do that anymore, because of the liability, this way if something happens when it's on its way here, it's completely their responsibility until it's delivered to us.
So when you guys go to inspect it, though, you really, you can't like inspect the equipment on it, because there's no hoses hooked up and everything ready to go right yet, right?
Correct, but it'll have a current, it'll already have its pump certification, so it's already been through all those tests, all the loose equipment, we order separately, we'll run it, we'll drive it, we'll probably pump with it, because it's already done all it, it's already got a certification. And then, yeah, we go through the fine-tooth comb runner with creepers, we put a little piece of tape, and if we find any little glitch in the paint, and anything and everything that we are not satisfied with, or that isn't, has what the spec states it should be, that's what, that's our chance to, because after that point, it's our, you know, whatever, after that point, we own it, so.
Cool. All right.
So what we have done, we've completed two of the CRP burns that have been requested, two city hall here, we had a third, but they backed out, that landowner backed out until next year, so it seemed to be going okay.
What was your biggest CRP burn, it'll do, it'll be no acres?
Uh, we did a seventeen acre and a fifteen acre, so nothing really big, we had one request come in for over a hundred acres, as long as it's going to wait until next year, so.
All right, any questions for chief? Thank you. Good luck with that truck, you're welcome to inspect it.
Order. Been waiting for it.
No pool there yet, but that's going to be coming up faster than no one, so let's take this community commission board reports. Chamber of Commerce, nothing here. We got the message, April eighteenth, EDA, HRA, it'll be a meeting next Tuesday coming up. And also that, Josh. Finance, we're on sabbatical, because we got done with the audit and stuff, so I'll take it, get ready for the run of the state, I suppose. Library, meeting next week. Park order?
Met last night at the new Rolling Ridge Park. Went over quite a few things, I guess, the big thing is, they're going to put some benches on that park, so parents can have somewhere to sit, we're possibly going to get a couple picnic tables out there until the shelters are built. We approved to order a swing set for out there. Really?
It's going to be for pickleball.
And then pickleball, pickleball, they're going to, Sean's going to, or Sean's going to paint.
We're going to get some pricing for painting that, because it's on the tennis courts, we're going to paint pickleballs inside the tennis courts, so it can be used for either, so if no one's out there.
It's a bigger cave.
A lot of bigger cave.
And I want to get that professionally done, because it looks so nice out there, I don't want us going out there to spray paint and putting line up there, not that our guys aren't professional. I, it looks nice, I just soon have that professionally down there.
And then some people know also metal park is painted, and Sean's ordered a net this week, say go in the hockey rink and play pickleball, yeah.
Oh, you're going to pickleball there too?
We scraped that last year. That we did do ourselves.
We got anybody in the pickleball tournament, is that this weekend or yesterday?
Yeah, but our guy pulled muscle, he's out.
Oh, okay.
One of our team is doing it.
So things coming, a lot of pickleball courts are getting used, so we're just trying to help on, I guess. Anything else, Sean? That's about it, I think.
Yep. Oh, block top on the trail, get the pricing for getting the trail blocked out there, but that would come out of our path, we've got a budget set up for that, so I just need to get racing and see if that'll fit within that.
How many, how many people are on there, multi?
A team?
Four.
Four.
Two on two.
Two on two?
Two. We got two and a half teams up here, we could take on the citizens.
Yeah, busy that weekend.
That'd be better to be, basically.
So there was some talk about being pickleball leagues, that's possibly something that's coming, we're looking into it.
All right, is that it, Brett?
That's it.
Wonderful job. Personnel?
Met with Public Works regarding possible some restructuring, you had upcoming retirements, and the minutes for that meeting are in the packet.
Lighting zone.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll bring the sage. Oh, upcoming meeting, I'm sorry, lighting, beginning of June.
No, I probably only has a monthly report of the week.
Want to stay on the addicts?
At least you're not a body cast.
Public Works, Jenna has a question for you.
Larry's monitoring.
Oh, okay.
He did, but that date does not work for Susan, so Wednesday, May thirty-first, or Tuesday, June sixth, or I have to get looking at others, if the six o'clock works better than the five, that you do that?
Tell me when it's six o'clock, I'll be there.
Either one?
Yeah.
Do you have any preferences?
I don't know. We're better than one.
All right, let's schedule it for Wednesday, May thirty-first then. And we will be discussing and scoping facility planning for the wastewater treatment plan.
Wednesday, May thirty-first, that's a lot.
Six o'clock, yep.
She'll have to reprocess my schedule, so.
What's the agenda, Jenna?
Um, discussing and scoping out.
Planning. Planning.
Future planning for the way.
Future planning.
Okay.
Or officially, we call it facility planning, and that's what will give us grant money.
All right, ready?
Um, that's in your packet there, and the big thing they're working on is joint support by all those member cities for the Ratchester Sales Tax, which then in turn, they're working on ways where that can benefit then all those cities to similar or along the lines, as they work toward it, on maybe allocations being available for the different cities. I think they're still working on how that format will work, but we'd all get something in return, so it makes sense to support that.
You're kind of going to be ready for the pass you person, right?
Yeah.
So what's the worst key up to up at the state, what's?
I haven't heard the latest negotiations.
Fight over it. All our brays and everything, it's crazy.
All right, any other questions for Bill on that? And rope cog?
No report in the meeting.
Transit Advisory Committee?
No report.
Ridership fires way up.
Good, good public response.
Well, that's good. Well, in Communications is from Min Energy, presuming, well, it's about rate increases, isn't it, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So, all right, open mic, who do you want to use your mic? Dan, you want to throw a mic or anything?